Yeah, I'm curious.
I saw he is.
Yeah.
Remember he is.
Oh. Uh oh. They have a record. All we want. My in-laws in them, something.
Exactly.
I tried another thing. Well, it's more trouble, I figured it was more trouble.
It's everyone.
There's no specific lines.
No, there is not.
Perfect, okay.
That's what you wanted to know.
So we do?
Yes, I think that makes sense.
The law?
Sure. What money?
Ten minutes. Ten minutes.
No less than seven. Six seconds. Is that dangerous?
Yeah.
Let's say they'll be first, they'll be last.
I would say, I always had worked with ten of us. It was just last week, so I think they're really dirty. It's just a long time, and I'm sure that. It rapidly, I thought. We don't have a lot of days.
That's atrocious.
And I could be.
It's going to take a major.
It was. But I actually looked at the business of the town, and I was saying, what they are. They're welcome center. So, yeah. But man, it was, what they did, how they incorporated tracks, like the original track.
Good, good evening.
Yeah.
I'll call the January seventeen, twenty twenty-three meeting of the planning commission to order. First, we'll have a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Butler? Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Here.
Dr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next order of business is the annual elections of the officers and reorganization. So, I will open with nominations for twenty twenty-three Chair of the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, I would like to start this discussion for nomination or however you want to put it. I don't have a comment to make.
Look, go right ahead.
Say that again.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I am looking for someone to, for someone to facilitate these before I turn, before I submit a vote. I'm looking for someone that can facilitate these meetings, and I hate turning my back to you guys in a timely manner. Um, I am also looking for someone, um, that would, um, accept some of my proposed changes, which would be that each commissioner has a time limit to ask discuss, to ask questions, and a time limit on how long we discuss items in these meetings. Quite often, and I want to turn this way as well, we set any meetings longer than the Board of Supervisors do. I understand that it's ten of us on this panel, and I also understand that everyone is allowed time to ask questions and discuss items. But in some cases, the discussion go on way too long and the items are not resolved, and they still go to the Board of Supervisors. So, I respectfully, I respectfully request that when we nominate someone, we nominate someone that can facilitate these meetings and tap the gavel until it turns up. And that's what I'm looking for. I am, I am not being rude, but I'm being, I'm, I'm just acknowledging everyone's time when we come here to these meetings. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Is there?
That's a, oh, go ahead.
One, one second. Um, to, to ask a question of you, are you? Are you thinking about changing the bylaws of the, of the Planning Commission?
Well, from my understanding.
Because that, that, that would be a much bigger discussion.
Okay, from my understanding, it, it can be done. I have reached out and asked for, um, advice. Um, is it, are we allowed to cut down on the times that we have for meetings because it's ten of us? And quite often, we have a few that ask questions. I mean, the, the questioning session will go on for thirty minutes, forty minutes, fifty minutes. It's all depends on, you know, whether they continue to want to ask questions or not. Um, when I look at other counties, other counties as well have a time limit on, um, how long presentations last and how long we have for discussions. So, that's why I propose these changes, and that's why I'm looking to nominate or to vote for someone that can fas, that, that can facilitate these meetings and keep track of time and understand that maybe we have, you know, some nights we may have one item for discussion, some night, some nights we have five. But I, I think everyone quietly is, I may be the only one that's saying it out loud, but I know that there are many people who, who believe that these meetings go on entirely too long.
Okay. All right. Well, let's, let's move back to the, the elections at hand. Um, and we'll, you know, we can, we can address other, other issues at, at a later point.
With that being said, I'd like to nominate, um, Mark Bennett as the Chairman of the Planning Commission for twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, if it's approved, I would move to close the nominations for the twenty twenty-three.
Three Chair for the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you. So, we, we have one nomination, Mr. Bennett, for twenty twenty-three Chair of the Planning Commission. Do you have a vote? Ms. Thomas?
Nay.
Mr. Tiller?
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett?
Abstain.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye. With that, I will turn the gavel over to Mr. Bennett for the rest of the elections.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Um, before we proceed to the next position, I'd like to thank Ms. Rose for the last two years of being Chairman for this commission. I will now call for the election of the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. I am open to any nominations for that position.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Davis.
I'll second. If I may interject just for a second here, um, though I think Mr. Davis is a valued candidate here. Mr. Davis does sit on the BZA and also is the Chair of the Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan and sits on this commission. Um, but, but I believe he can do it, so.
You should come and walk.
Well, if, and my interjection would be, is there an issue with having the Chair or Vice Chair from the same district? I don't know if that's a issue or, or not, if that matters.
Is there anything in the bylaws?
No.
Attorney was shaking his head. No, we can't, I know this on the. You're not being helpful.
Don't you even go with the judge, Joe, I'm not getting you off the.
Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, if so.
Yes, Ms. Townsend.
I'll move to close the nominations for the twenty twenty-three Vice Chair for the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Um, as there is only one nomination and the acceptance of such, uh, is there a motion to accept his posi, his new position by acclamation? Now, vote. Basically, everybody's voting at one time. No, want to do a vibe roll?
Mr. Chairman?
Roll call vote, please.
Okay. You have to do, you have to do, I say, I move to elect, uh, Joe Davis as the twenty twenty-three Vice Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission by acclamation.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt.
Okay. Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Abstain.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We now move to the election of the public hearing chairperson. Do I have any nominations for that position?
I'd like to nominate, um, Dr. Schmidt as the public chairperson. I move to nominate as the twenty twenty-three, uh, wait, where is it at? As the twenty twenty-three public hearing chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission, Dr. Schmidt.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll move to close the nominations for the twenty twenty-three public hearing Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Dr., uh, Ms. Townsend. Move to elect?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to elect, uh, Dr. Schmidt as the twenty twenty-three public hearing Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission by acclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Abstain.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Abstain.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Moving along, next position is for the public hearing Vice Chair. Um, I'm accepting any nominations for Vice Chair of Public Hearings.
I move to, to elect Gary LaRochelle as the, um, public hearing Vice Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission twenty twenty-three.
I move to close the nominations for the twenty twenty-three public hearing Vice Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Move to elect?
Mr. Chairman, I move to elect Mr. Rush, LaRochelle as the twenty twenty-three public hearing Vice Chair for New Kent County Planning Commission by acclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Um, vote, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Push it once.
Mr. Tiller?
Abstain.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Abstain.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Moving to the final position that is open, the coveted, uh, Plan RBA representative. I, I'm open the floor for nominations for that position.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I move to nominate Amy Pearson as the twenty twenty-three Plan RBA representative for New Kent County Planning Commission.
Do, do I hear a quick second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Davis, Mr. Moyer? Do I have a motion to close?
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the nominations for the twenty twenty-three Plan RBA representative of New Kent County, Amy Pearson.
Motion to elect, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
I'll move to elect Amy Pearson as the twenty twenty-three Plan RBA representative of New Kent County Planning Commission by acclamation.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Abstain.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
No, I mean abstain.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye, thank you.
You're welcome.
And congratulations to all those who are accepted a position. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the bylaws. From reading of the adoption, of the bylaws, the only thing that I see that has, uh, changed is the date of, um, of our acclamation of the bylaws. I don't think there's any hell of a changes, are there any things that, in that Michiganers want to bring to the forefront on the bylaws? Last chance? Seeing nobody, um.
Mr. Chairman, if you, if you'd like, I, I can move.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Thomas, did you have something?
Yeah.
Okay. Excuse me.
I stated earlier, um, about some changes. I don't know exactly where these changes would go. I don't know how to properly, I, I, I know I have voiced these proposed changes. I don't know if they would go in the bylaws. I don't know. This is something that, um, I would ask the county attorney to guide me on.
Yes, I can give you my two cents and, and let you guys take it from there. Uh, for Westwood, you don't have anything in your bylaws about time limits or, or anything speaking directly to that, and frankly, it would be unusual for me to see that in a, in a group of bylaws. Your bylaws are generally governed by Robert's Rules of Order. Um, and in terms of time limits on, on speakers, although you do have those for citizen comment, the board, you have a provision in your bylaws, which I was just looking at, that says, um, there's no limit to the number of times a member can speak to a question. There's also nothing in there expressly about any time limit. Typically, the way that is governed by a group body is either through the Chair or by a member who feels that if they're ready to make a vote, you make a motion. So, if somebody's speaking or asking questions, and another member feels that they've heard all they need to hear, they can simply say, listen, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, I move to call the que, I move to recommend approval, recommend denial, whichever the action is. And then, if there's continuing discussion, you may, or another member may say, Mr. Chair, I move to call the question, which means, let's stop debating this and just.
Move the topic on.
Move the topic on. So, as a procedural way, that's what I would suggest that you handle this without trying to tinker with the bylaws.
Okay.
Just sort of handling it as a group effort.
Thank you.
Self policing, if you will.
Mr. Chairman, I would.
Yes, Mr. LaRochelle.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. LaRochelle.
I would comment that, um, obviously, we did have some marathon meetings last year, so I think we can all, um, relate to where Ms. Thomas is coming from there. I don't know, I think we got here at eleven o'clock or something, uh, seemed like right two or three meetings last year that were, that were real marathons, and obviously, the business of the people has to be handled. I don't know that, I don't know the right way to, um, to limit that, but that's tough. That, that can be tough. I mean, some people work and some people are not on the board, but, you know, eleven o'clock, getting out here at eleven o'clock after working all day and then going to work the next day. Um, I'm probably not giving it my best at eleven o'clock at night, so, just for the record.
Yes, Mr. Moyer. Um, there's, there's two reasons why I got on the planning missions. One, I came to planning commission meetings and saw the packets opened. Nobody here was on the planning commission, opened for the first time by the people that were coming to the, that were commissioners. And the second reason was I was at a economic development meeting, and somebody, one of the development people said, please make this quick because I got a dentist appointment. And I went, what? You don't have the time to do this position? I don't care if you don't get paid, if you get paid peanuts. And, and so that's, that's the reason I'm on the commission. Um, so if, if I'm, if I don't come prepared, if I have to stay late, those are my problems. Um, I, that's how it goes.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Moyer, yes, Ms. Rose.
Um, I, I'd just like to make one, one comment about the, I guess, the, the state of our, um, our zoning ordinance. Uh, while I, I agree, I agree, the, some of the, some of the meetings did go long, and we can, we can work to improve on that. But the other, the flip side of that is the fact that our ordinance, because there are so many things that need to, need to be changed and updated, the discussion and the questions are a lot more extensive because of that. So, one, I, I think. Because it, it, it isn't cut and dry, and.
So, I would like to, if you finish, I would like to respectfully comment, um, on just, if you share our thoughts on the whole. As a member of the professional community, I set in meetings every day, and the one thing I do know is that we have to drive change. We are paid to drive change, and we're paid to do it in a time and a manner. I do understand that there are going to be discussions as long as been other discussions. I understand that. But we also have to be mindful that we have ten people on this panel, and a few, you know, I just feel like a, a few monopolize the time, and these meetings go on and on and on. Am I saying that we, we, we are wrong for discussing these meetings? Absolutely not. I understand exactly what meetings are and how to drive change, and even though I don't comment a lot or want to run for office, I know exactly what driving change is, um, on a daily basis. But back then and said, um, I share my thoughts respectfully. I know that some people may not like or understand why I say it, but I do know that even when we are driving change, we are expected to do it in a time and a manner.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Yes, Ms. Townsend.
Um, I've sort of forgotten how long I've been on this board, but it's been a little while, I think. Um, but throughout the years, we've had board members who may have just sat here, listened and said, yay, nay, and that's about it. But we have found that if we don't talk, we don't get all the details and we don't get the thing right. And I have been very pleased with this board because it's like each member finally has a voice and is being heard on this board. Um, like I say, I, I can't remember how long I've been here, but there has been several years of, of people just sort of being quiet. But it really gets me excited to hear everybody to talk. Um, I agree with our attorney is that, you know, if we're getting to be talking too much or out of line, you know, maybe somebody needs to bring it to the attention and say, hey, let's, let's move on, or, you know, let's, let's get it done. But I will say, I've been very pleased with this board because this board feels, I feel like this board is doing what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to talk about the issue, get it straight, make sure you understand it, because if you don't understand it, I can tell you that the public doesn't understand it. Um, so that's why all the details are very, very important.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend.
So, as a, as an alternative, is there, um, particularly in months, if we have a, an agenda that's really slammed, should that be split into two meetings? Or we just pack a lunch and, you know? Um, I, I, I don't know what the solution is, and certainly debate and discussion is important. That's why we're here, to ask the questions and to, and to, um, to get the information that we need to make a decision. I agree with that a hundred percent.
And I don't think anyone would take an offense to it if somebody said, hey, we've talked too much. Let's, let's move on and let's get it done. So, I would say that if anybody would, would just say, let's call for a vote, I'm sure that we can, we can move on if it needed be.
You either call for a vote or call for a ta, tabling for, excuse me, call for tabling for the ne, for the next meeting and have, have everybody think about it.
Thank you very much for the discussion. Moving along to the adoption of the bylaws, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if everybody's in agreement, I move to accept the bylaws for twenty twenty-three.
Do we need a second on that? Mr. Attorney?
You don't need a second, but you need a vote.
I, I know that.
I do not believe you needed a second. Um, motions need not be seconded.
Okay.
According to the bylaws, which are approved.
Thank you, sir. Call for a vote, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Abstain.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the twenty twenty-three meeting schedule. Um, Ms. Berry did pass out a revised schedule. Uh, make sure everybody did receive that? Okay. After perusing the, the meeting schedule, do I have?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt the twenty twenty-three meeting schedule as presented.
Roll call?
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item, item number five on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes for December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any additions, corrections, or anything that needs to be added? Mr. Davis? Of course.
Well, and, uh, page, uh, four of seven, uh, let's see, third paragraph from the bottom, just to correct, uh, Mr. Bennett's name. So, there's a T missing.
Hasn't, there's been a T missing for a long time.
And on page, uh, five. And on page, uh, five, uh, last, uh, paragraph and general, just general comments editorial, um, you don't have to use the apostrophe or pluralize, pluralize the name. Um, you can just put the S there. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
You say that.
Oh, excuse me.
She invited the makens? Is that where you're at?
Yeah, the plural, um, just take out the apostrophe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Um, I forget, on, uh, page two of seven, um, the first paragraph under presentations, the sentence, it starts up, the, the Code of Virginia requires the planning commission to review the localities. That, that should be, that probably will be there, but, but annuals, uh, capital improvement plan. It says comprehensive plan, but. And then, uh, page three, that fir- first paragraph, he said the parking lot would be gravel as opposed to asphalt. The se- the second paragraph on, on page three, um, the, the bus, um, the, the fi- five new school buses approximately for scheduled for replacement, if you could put in parentheses, based on upon fifteen-year scheduled replacement. And then, uh, the third paragraph, um, Mr. Hathaway said the sheriff's department is in need of the upgrade. And then further on in that paragraph, uh, funding, uh, recommended funding, uh, for two, two symphony, I, I had in my notes, two symphony consoles and workstation upgrades. And then I had one question because I, I didn't write it in my notes. The next to the last paragraph on, on page three, uh, Mr. Hathaway was talking about the, um, the, the disaster preparing this plan. Was that a development of one or a revision? Did, did anybody have, have that in their no- in their notes?
From my readings, it's development of one.
Okay, that, that's what, that's what I thought. So if, if you could just add the word development of the.
A development of a disaster?
Yeah, the. Yeah, development of a disaster, preparing this plan is being recommended for a hundred fifty thousand dollars to, to hire a consultant. That's it.
Any other additions, corrections, or notations? Looks like Ms. Berry got two people looking after your no- your minutes now. Thank you. Call for a vote on the minutes? Or do I need to ask for a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Stand.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Stand.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Uh, now we're coming to the citizen's comment period. And I will call upon Mr. Hathaway, if you wouldn't mind, to see if anybody has signed up. And Mr. Hathaway says no, so we'll move along. Thank you, sir. Next item are, is there any presentations, Mr. Hathaway, or any member of the, um, staff? No? Presentations?
Staff presentations?
No, okay. I'm finished with business, moving right through the agenda here. Moving along. We are moving to public hearings. I will now turn it over to the public hearing chairperson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight we have one public hearing before us. Each has been properly advised for tonight's consideration. Let me take a moment to review the procedures that we will use for tonight's hearings. Each public hearing will be considered separately. Staff will give a brief overview of the hearing that is before us. The sponsor of the case will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. Commissioners will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the sponsors or staff for clarification purposes. I will then open the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing and receive your comments. Sign-up sheets are located on the desk by the front doors of the administration building. I ask the following. You come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, address your comments to the commission. Limit your comments to three minutes. When the timer sounds, please conclude your remarks. Please note that the commission members will not answer your questions during the citizens' comment period, but will certainly take those questions and comments into consideration during the deliberation period of the public hearing. Our public hearing for tonight is Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, pursuant to section twenty-five, or fifteen point two dash two-two-three-nine of the Code of Virginia. The planning commission will review and make, no, that's not. Make recommendations on the New Kent County fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the planning commission. I plan to be briefed to, tonight because we went over, uh, my CIP recommendation in detail at our last meeting, and I have no changes since that meeting. So I do have a very brief recap of the capital improvement plan that is before you today, uh, for FY twenty-four. All right. The FY twenty-four capital improvement plan totals, uh, for the fiscal year FY twenty-four totaled sixteen million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars. This is a significant increase from our FY twenty-three capital improvement plan, which totaled about five point one million dollars. The reason for that is, for the last four years, really, we've been setting aside new revenues, including Colonial Downs revenues, um, to expand our broadband network throughout the county. Uh, we've achieved our goal for that and no longer have to set aside new revenues for that. So really, I feel as if we're pay- we're playing catch-up right now, um, addressing some of the capital needs that we've set aside, while we focused on broadband expansion. And I'm happy to say, um, that construction will begin by the end of this month. I've actually been told next week, but I'm going to say by the end of the month. So we're, we're excited to see broadband moving forward and fully funded as, as well. But for our FY twenty-four project, I've, I've listed here where the revenue is coming from. Five point five million is coming from our CIP fund. Nine hundred and forty-five thousand is from federal and state grants. Uh, we do have a computer fund to replace our computers, which are on a five-year schedule. And forty-one thousand is going towards that. And Colonial Downs revenues, um, nine million, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars is going towards, um, our CIP for this year. Which totaled sixteen million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-six. This leaves us a remaining capital fund of about two point eight million dollars. And this does not include the million-dollar reserve that's, um, built into our capital improvement program. So technically, it's three point eight million dollars of unappropriated, unplanned funding. Just to touch on the big-ticket items, um, a big portion of that sixteen million dollars is the construction of a new fire station. We estimate the cost to be seven million, twenty-nine thousand dollars. Normally, that, this is something we would borrow for, uh, but we have the opportunity to cash fund this project. And that's what I'm recommending to do. Along with the new fire station, um, and we're looking in the Bottoms Bridge area, uh, for that, we're going to need some equipment to, to fill that station. So, uh, we do have nine hundred thousand for fire apparatus, uh, six hundred thousand for two ambulances, and two hundred and ninety thousand for fire and EMS support apparatus. For Bottoms Br- uh, for our Parks and Recs Department, uh, we have another big-ticket item of one million, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the installation of lighting at Pine Ford Park. We've heard the community, the community has requested lights at Pine Ford Park. And we're in an, we have an opportunity right now to fund that. With our General Services Department, their budget totaled a little over a million dollars, but the big-ticket item there was funding to purchase land in the western area of the county for a new refuse and recycling center. If you live on the west end, you're probably very familiar with Airport Road, our trash transfer site at Airport Road, and you've probably noticed that it's at capacity. In fact, um, if CVWMA, our vendor, miss one trash pickup, most of the time, we have to shut it down un- until we can get a, a driver out there to, to pick up trash. Unfortunately, it's outside of the county's control, um, but we're limited in size there, where we only have two compacters there, so. We also have a nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in projects, uh, planned for the airport. The lion's share of that is an off-airport obstruction removal project. It's basically where we're clearing their approach and takeoff of, of our runways. The good thing about this project, um, the county is only responsible for two percent of the cost. We will be reimbursed ninety percent from the federal government, eight percent from the State Department of Aviation, and only two percent, um, is the county's responsibility there. With the sheriff's department, the big project is a Hearst radio system upgrade. We also, um, keep it in line with our vehicle replacement policy. Uh, we have six hundred and two, twelve thousand dollars of, of vehicle repla- replacements. And I'm sorry, that, that is a, a type of there. Yeah. Well, the, the subtitle is, is wrong there. But the heading is right, vehicle replacements. And then General Services, I've already mentioned that. And another big-ticket item is our schools. Uh, we do fund our schools' capital improvements. This year, they're asking to replace, I believe, six buses, um, with the total cost of six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. A significant high school roof replacement project is being pl- planned. And a district-wide lighting upgrade, and this is for inside of their buildings, uh, switching to more energy-efficient lighting, LED. So even though it's a big cost, we hope to see a payback, um, on that as, in terms of the reduced en- energy bills. And then they have some school vehicles that they, um, are planning to replace as well. Public Utilities CIP, which is, um, before you two for consideration. That CIP total is five point four million dollars, and we break that out, um, because, the public utilities CIP, there's no tax-supported dollars involved with, um, supporting our utility system. Uh, our CIP projects and operating costs as well is totally funded by connect, utility connection fees and user fees. Uh, big-ticket items, uh, Colony site upgrades to the water system in the Colony's community. I believe that is the only community water system that the county maintains that does not have a backup system. So we do plan to install a backup system, a backup tank and holding facility, so we can reduce outages there, which we've been pretty good so far. We've had a few. There's also a million dollars planned for water system, uh, connections. I've received a lot of calls about all the little ribbons along two forty-nine in the Quentin area. That is for the expansion of our water system, tying in the Bottoms Bridge community to, actually, it's going to connect to the Food Lion, um, right at Air- Airport Road. So essentially, we'll have one big system, uh, which allows us to operate a lot more efficiently. So that's what those ribbons are for. Uh, one point five million for Taliesville Pump Station Grinder, um, to grind up waste before it gets into our system. And four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Utilities Operations Center site planning. We're out of space at our Public Utilities Department, and we are looking at some options for, um, either expanding or building a new administration office for our Public Utilities Department. That tends to be a common theme in the county right now. As we're growing, um, office space is at, at, it, it's at a premium right now, so. Those are the major projects, um, and that is the, uh, capital improvement plan, uh, that you have before you for consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Hathaway, I know that this is not, nothing with the plan here, but our last conversation, we're about the car replacements from the sheriff's department.
Yes.
Did we bring that to the school's attention and say, um, maybe perhaps they need to relook at Fords are not what they consider as the big SUVs? That, because that's a very good car, and I'd hate for them to lose an opportunity on that, and plus, it helps the county out as well.
We, we, we did, um, and, and, and we have in, in the past. We just think it's, it's a ridiculous requirement, and it's probably an old requirement from the eighties, when SUVs were more likely to top over due to the way that they, they were built. Today, they're built like cars, basically, um, and, and they don't top over. Their consulting, they, their response that I got is they're going to work with the Department of Education to see if, if that can be looked at again or changed, but they were adamant that that is a, a requirement, that they can't transport students in SUVs. So it's, ah, yeah, yeah.
And you told them that most of their parents transport them in?
That's right. That's, that's right, yeah. Right. Yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman. Oh, that's. Mi- mi- Ms. Public Hearing Chair, sorry. Rodney, quick, quick question on the, um, on the, the new transfer.
Yes.
Station that, that you're, that you're plan- planning for. Is that going to be a, a, a larger but a replacement of Airport or in addition to the Airport Road?
Depending on the location that we find, um, will determine that. Right now, we've not identified a location. We just know it needs to be in the west end. And, um, our plan is to build a facility the size of six eighteen or similar to. And our plan is to build a facility the size of Six Eighteen or similar to Six Eighteen. So we are looking for a larger, much larger facility.
That's near and dear to my heart.
Yes.
I ran over there to dump some recyclables, and everything's full.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I know it's at capacity.
Mr. Hathaway, just clarification. So is the fire stations, is this for Station Two or for Station Six then?
Well, that, that.
I was there last time.
That is to be determined. I've been back to our fire chief. He has requested that we do Station Six first. We'll see if the board stays with that, but the board might say, let's do Station Two first, but we are recommending that we go with Station Six first, based on my conversation with the fire chief. That would be Bottoms Bridge, yes.
And the money program, year one, does it make a difference if it's Station Two or Station Six?
No.
Is that much increase in the year two then, cost?
I don't believe, I think both stations will be very similar. I think the thinking behind the difference in cost was the price of the land. But I think we're gonna be fine. I think we're around seven million for both stations. But what we've listed is what was asked for from departments. For each, yes.
And do we use a prototype design?
Yeah, we have a pretty good idea of what we think it should cost, but you know, that all depends on the market, too. We're about to break ground on Station Four. Stay tuned for the groundbreaking for that. I believe we have a tentative date of February tenth for Station Four groundbreaking, which is really a replica of Station Five. We really like that model. It works well with our operations. So yes, we will continue to use that similar style development, that station.
Rodney, I have a question. So for the fire stations, it has on here that it's a loan, but you said it's all gonna be cash-funded, is that correct?
Yeah, what was originally requested was to borrow, and I'm just of the opinion, you know, let's not borrow if we don't have to. And fortunately, we're really fortunate that we don't have to.
And that was my other question. So the nine point seven, almost nine point eight million from Colonial Downs, that's in addition to the broadband money that Colonial Downs is.
Yes, that's in addition to what we've set aside, which is about thirteen million dollars for broadband.
Mr. Hathaway? And while I'm thinking about it, because I'll probably forget before our board meeting, the school bus replacement, that's under their CIP, right?
CIP, yes.
And any money that they have left over at the end of the year, doesn't that go into their CIP projects?
It does. We have an agreement with the schools, and I think it's a good agreement because it encourages, it encourages them not to be wasteful, to be honest with you. We, a lot of us have probably worked in organizations where at the end of the year, you're just buying stuff to spend your budget down. Well, our policy with the schools is, at the end of the year, you get to keep what's not spent and roll it over to your capital needs. So it really encourages them to be, you know, yes, yes, to manage their money. So yes, that is still there, the policy.
So I guess what I was getting at, if they've got capital funds already set aside, why wouldn't they use that to buy the school buses?
Well.
Or do they already have that money spent?
Their set-aside money, and actually, their end-of-the-year money that went to capital was huge this year, and it was, it was not typical of a normal year, only because of the money that they've gotten from the state, the COVID grants that they've received. They've not had to spend a lot of their money. They had other resources coming in. What they're proposing to do, though, is a lion's share of that money actually is going towards the planning of an overhaul of the existing New Kent Elementary School. I know right now, they are finalizing a contract with Mosley Architects to do the architectural and engineering drawings, to do a revamp of the existing elementary school. And what they don't spend, their plan is to put that in a set-aside to go towards the renovation of that school. You know, and, you know, that school was built in, I believe, nineteen seventy-four. We've had some expansions of that school, but no real renovation of the core facility.
So that's on here as to be determined, so you're saying that that would be used for that, and it would need to have additional funding on here?
That will require additional funding, and that will probably be FY twenty-five. Right now, their focus is doing the design work, so we can have an idea of what that cost will be.
Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, I will now open the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing. Mr. Chairman, there's no one signed up, so I will close the public hearing and turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Discussion among the Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, do you want a motion to accept the CIP, or do we just vote straight when it is call a vote?
I would like a motion to recommend, recommend our approval.
Okay.
There's a motion.
Go ahead, sorry, somebody can make it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
In order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution number PC zero-one-twenty-three to forward the capital improvements program FY twenty-twenty-four through FY twenty-twenty-eight to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Berry, roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Abstain.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Onto new business, and I'll peer over the gavel here, looking to Mr. Hathaway again. Is there any new business you would like to announce? Or any new news?
Yes, yes, I do have some new news that I'd like to announce today. Was the first day for our new Planning Director, Mrs. Amy Enman. She had a prior engagement this evening and was not able to be here tonight, but I look forward to introducing you to her in person. So we're excited about that. Amy comes with over twenty-five years of experience in planning, and a lot of experience in transportation planning as well, so we're looking forward to working with her. And I'm also happy to announce that, starting today, actually, was the, is the first day of our new Assistant County Administrator serving, and that's Matt Smolnick, who's been promoted to Assistant County Administrator. Matt will continue to head up the day-to-day economic development activities, but he will also be responsible for the Planning Department, so you guys will see a lot more of Matt, as well as environmental and building. So we're very excited about the new personnel changes, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway, and I hope, Matt, you have a good quantity of energy to drink, so, okay? Congratulations, sir. Next on the agenda is Chairman's Report, and since I'm newly elected, I have none, so we'll pass that up for now. We'll move right along to the Covenant Plan RVA report from Amy.
There was no meeting in January. There you go.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pearson? Moving along to the thirteenth item on the agenda, Commissioners' Report. Anybody on the Commission that'd like to report something? I just see Mr. Davis's finger is primed.
Well, just to report out, at last meeting, we were meeting the very next day for the Steering Committee meeting, so I'm just gonna do a quick report out, and I'm gonna ask, Anne Marie, I'll give you a copy of the results of the survey results, and we can share with all the Commissioners, I apologize, I wasn't thinking of that in advance, it just struck me, so. But the next meeting, you'll have the same information, so I'm just gonna touch the highlights. I'm certainly not gonna read to you the information or data that was arrived by the, by the survey. So we did meet on December twentieth, and we have another meeting scheduled for February, March timeframe. The, again, general aspects of the survey results, some of the themes, again, I'm not gonna read all this to you, but quickly. Many survey respondents expressed concern about the rapid commercial and residential growth, preferring a more rural feel. No new news there, I think, is the general consensus. However, this is the next one. However, there was also significant support for more high-quality grocery, retail, and dining options, suggesting the county should take a measured approach to new development. So.
Yeah.
And that kind of ties into one of the next comments I'll make in a minute. Respondents tended to support new development in designated village areas along Interstate Sixty-four and in existing PUDs. Participants were generally unsatisfied with broadband access in New Kent County. Again, nothing new, but we're changing that as of next week. Preservation of nature and improving and expanding schools and investing in public safety were indicated as high priorities for the county over the next twenty years. Again, for me personally, there's no significant surprises in the data results. Again, we didn't reach the overall numbers, the survey respondents, as far as the numbers of those respondents, we wish could have been higher. And with that in mind, there will be another, at least another, survey coming up in the future, and we'll kind of fine-tune those survey questions, but the focus for those survey questions certainly will involve, I think, a few more maps, zoning maps, future land use maps, things like that, also addressing transportation issues as well. On the positive side, participants generally express support or satisfaction with New Kent's, well, proximity to Richmond and Williamsburg, so I guess it's a good place to be, as far as in that central mid-area between the two communities. Community spirit was positive, rural character's positive, local government's positive, balanced, moderate development, especially more retail shopping or grocery options, natural beauty, schools, and low crime rates. Again, I think I checked the mark on that, too, as far as, I'm in New Kent. General concerns or concerns for or dissatisfaction, overdevelopment of rural areas, broadband internet access, the lack of high-quality retail dining and grocery options, access to healthcare and childcare, traffic congestion, congestion particularly related to Sixty-four. And participants also would like to see the county focus on preserving nature and rural aspects, improving or expanding public schools, investing in public safety, more parks and recreation opportunities, transportation improvements to reduce congestion. Again, no surprises, I feel, in the results. Maybe the next survey can fine-tune to give us certainly that better guide in how we're gonna translate that into actual, you know, comp plan, zoning ordinance, and further down the line, so. But again, you know, I guess stay tuned is the best way to put it. Again, as far as the general aspect, certainly, Ms. Rose, Mr. Moyer, Mr. Bennett, we're present as well, anything else you feel we should touch on at being at the meeting?
The.
And again, I'll give this to Anne Marie, and she can make copies for the Commission, and then the next meeting, you'll have a better, you can look at more of the details involved.
Mr. Moyer? The, couple of things, going back to that meeting, one of the things that, as you mentioned, what we'd like to have in that are a lot of market-driven answers or needs being solved, the restaurants and all that. If there's no market for it, the local government can't do much about it.
Right.
And that was one of the themes of the meeting, is people wanted stuff like that, and we don't have the population, we don't have the population. But it did stress the rural nature that we wanted, as was mentioned in the strategic plan, that seems to be going along with it. Matt, if I can ask, have you seen the survey yet, or have you looked at the results? And I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just thinking that this is something that you, in this role, the one, the one thing that was pretty interesting, I thought, was the population that was here thirty years and more didn't want more. The population with sixty-five and older wanted more. I thought that was an interesting.
It is, you know, so, so the, you know, the nitty-gritty, I'll be honest, you know, I haven't gone, you know, knee-deep into all the details. You know, I know some other community associations have done similar-type surveys as far as, you know, what we need, you know, what do y'all want to see? And, you know, Mr. Moyer, with that, with a growing population, it's definitely changed. In my eight years here at the county, you know, I think the sentiment has changed quite a bit. You know, and it's a balancing act. I have this conversation, you know, I had it this morning with a group, it's a balancing act of preserving or rural areas, focusing growth, and it's coming. It's, you know, we, you know, and I think you said, or I think it was you said it, you know, if the market's not there, you can't force people to spend their money. That's the key. You know, they're going to come in a location where they're going to pay the bills and then make some on top. End of story. That's what, that's how business works. So, you know, times are, times have changed, they're changing for the better. I think from an economic development and a commercial standpoint, you know, if the market holds up, we'll see, but I think, you know, just, you know, where we're at, it's coming, folks. And there's a lot of, and I think there's gonna be a piece in a paper coming up, there's a lot of eyes on New Kent. You know, really, these last fifteen months have changed. Instead of, you know, me flying across the country, beating the pavement, it's my phone ringing off the hook. Hey, Matt, tell me about New Kent, which is what this board, what this administration has planned for, for years. You know, with the, and I don't want to ramble on, but I just want to, you know, talk to the Planning Commission, it's been a while, you know, since I've been in front of you all. You know, this has been the long-term growth plan, you know, from the extension of the public utilities to the interstate exchanges, to some of these big PUDs that have been approved, and now the market's, you know, saying, okay, it's time to go. So I think it's a good time. It's always interesting whenever you, you know, you ask the community what they want, and as I always say, it's, there's the wants of the community and the needs of the community, you know, two very different things. You know, some of the, we want to make sure we check those need boxes. And the wants are fun, the needs are necessary for life. So we'll see where we go, but it's an exciting time. And, you know, members of the Planning Commission, I'm, you know, real excited in my new role to be working with the Planning Department, the other departments again, and to be able to interact with you. You know, it's a great opportunity for me. I, you know, thank Rodney and the Board of Supervisors for giving me this opportunity, and it's gonna be good times ahead. So feel free to always reach out to me if you guys have any questions. My door is always open to each and every one of you. Good? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Smolnick.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Townsend?
Could I share a little something with the board?
Certainly.
Over the weekend, one of our family members had taken a fall, and I wanted to say kudos to the fire and rescue of New Kent County. Station Two was there before I could even get there. I have never seen such outstanding service, well-prepared, and the thing about it is that these employees that came in here, they had compassion. You know, when you have somebody elderly, sometimes you need to slow down, but these people that came were wonderful. So good job getting this fire department going. I'm very proud to have to say this, that I am so grateful for fire and rescue, they did a wonderful job.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Kudos to the first responders in this community, they are among the best. Mr. Davis, I think you have something to add?
Just to follow up, I'd like to at least mention publicly, congratulations to Mr. Tiller on his election to chair.
Thank you.
And to pinpoint Mr. Tiller, Mr. Tiller, do you have any items from the last supervisor? from the last Supervisors' meeting you'd like to share with us that would be pertinent to the commission? If it's no, it's no.
Not really. It was, it wasn't really that long of a meeting that we just had, and we pretty much reorganized our meetings like you all did tonight.
Very similar to tonight's meeting here, reorganization more than anything. And, and that's, it goes pretty quick with us, and we only have to nominate two people.
Y'all have a lot.
Because on that board, the chairman is the, chairs the, um, public hearings as well, so. So that's, that's that. But no, it's, this has been, when Ms. Townsend spoke earlier about she didn't know how many years she'd been on this commission, this is my twentieth year. Because I served eight before I ran for the board, and I've been to board for all twelve years. So I look at twenty years on the Planning Commission, so, but I've enjoyed it. But, and Ms. Townsend was right, there was a very quiet Planning Commission years ago. And we had some really short meetings back then, too, before we decided if we didn't have a public hearing, we weren't going to have a meeting. Because we'd come here some nights, and you'd only have four people here, and we'd even have a meeting. So, but it's, it's changed, and for the better. And, but I agree with you, Ms. Thomas, we can make it even better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Anybody else? Seeing nobody else, we'll go on to the next items, staff reports. And I'm afraid I'll have to call Mr. Hathaway up here again, unless he just wants us to peruse the annual report on our, on our own. Say, I can't, say, we can peruse it on our own.
Yes, and Ms. Laduke, I believe, will be prepared at your next meeting to go over it with you in more detail.
Thank you. Just as I briefly perused it, we had nine meetings last year, and it seems like this commission got a lot accomplished in the nine meetings. So kudos to everybody. Onto the meeting schedule, the next Planning Commission, and I'm not sure if there's any items that we know of on the agenda for next potential items.
For our February meeting, I don't believe there are any potential items coming up for that agenda. I do believe your March meeting is going to be full of that. It's going to be busy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Our next meeting is scheduled for, potentially, but not likely, February twenty, twenty-first in this room at six thirty? Yes? Yes, Mr. Moyer?
I would like to thank Ms. Rose for her time as chairman. Great job.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Rose, very, very much. Do I have a motion? And don't everybody stand up at once, please. Do I have a motion for a German? Thank you very much. This meeting has concluded.